God bless you, good morning, good morning, good morning. Good morning, New Mount Alice, that this church family, good morning to all family, all friends, all former students, well work wishers. We greet you with Jesus' joy because the joy of the Lord is our strength. Let us bow our heads in prayer this morning and while you're getting ready, we are in the book of Psalms. We are going to be covering Psalms 5, 6, and 7 this morning. Let us pray. Father, I stretch my hands to thee. There is no other help, I know. If thou withdraw thyself from us, Father, where shall we go? Lord, we thank you today for life, for health, for strength. We thank you, Lord, that it is as well as it is with our souls. Lord, we thank you how you watched over our families last night while we slumbered and slept. So God, we give you glory and honor for who you are. Now God, we ask that you continue to bless those that are going through trials and tribulations of the loss of a loved one. Lord, we thank you for those that have lost a job, Father God, lost a home, lost a car. Lord, whatever the situation is, we pray for them now. We pray for our brothers and sisters who are just lost, who don't know you in the pardon of their sin. We pray, God, that they might hear a word from you, that they might repent of their sins and receive you as their Lord, their Savior, and their God. Father, bless and heal those that are sick and afflicted. Bless and heal those that are mentally disturbed this morning. Bless and heal those, Father God, who have lost items, lost homes, lost various things, God, damages to churches and homes through these hurricanes and tornadoes. God, we just say thank you because in the worst situation, we're going to look and find one thing, God, and give you glory and honor for the one thing. Because, Lord, it could have been so much worse. Lord, thank you today as you open our hearts and our minds that we might receive what it is that you have for us to learn today. We thank you and we give you praise. It is in Jesus' name that we ask all of these blessings and give you all of the praise, the glory, and the honor. And all those who believe join me and said, "Amen." Amen, amen, this morning. I would first like to begin by apologizing for the video on Sunday, the Facebook Live. We are experiencing some difficulties and we hope to have this resolved very soon. I have heard some of your situations, I've heard some of your requests, and we are working as quickly as we can to try to get that resolved. So at another time, we will come back and minister that word so that you can hear it in its entirety. As we look this morning in the book of Psalms, we are looking at Psalm 5. And Psalm 5 begins by simply saying, "Give ear to my words, O Lord; consider my meditation; hearken unto the voice of my cry, my King and my God; for unto thee will I pray. My voice shalt thou hear in the morning. O Lord, in the morning will I direct my prayer unto thee and will look up; for thou art not a God that hath pleasure in wickedness; neither shall evil dwell with thee. The foolish shall not stand in thy sight; thou hated all workers of iniquity." And verse 6, "Thou shalt destroy them that speak leasing; the Lord will abhor the bloody and deceitful man." As we look at those verses today, 1 through 6, we are learning that God will certainly hear our prayers. We learn that David gives the glory to God and he takes to himself comfort in knowing that God will hear his prayer. You see, God is a prayer-hearing God. Such as he has always been, and I believe by faith he always will be, he is as ready to hear our prayer today as he was when he listened to David. The most encouraging principle of prayer and the most powerful plea of prayer is to look upon him as our King and our God. David also is praying to a sin-hating God. God does not like sin, he hates sin, but the blessing is, he loves the sinner. We must make sure, because you see, God says that sin is fallen and sinners are the greatest of all, they say the word expression, fools. He's not calling anyone a fool, but he's saying that it is the greatest of all fools. And wicked people, they seem to hate God. Why do they hate God? Because God justly, he hates sin. And some of us that have not asked forgiveness of sin, they're enjoying it. And so therefore, they don't like God because they know that when they accept God, their lives must change. But little do they know, in their lives being changed and transformed, they can have greater joy, greater peace, greater tranquility with the newness that God can give. So we look and we learn today that the importance of truth and sincerity in all the affairs of life, that liars and murderers must, will resemble the devil and all of his children. Therefore, it may be well expected that God would abhor them. These were the characters of David's enemies. And as such, there are still the enemies of Christ and Christ's people or Christ's children who we are. Let us look now Psalm 5, verses 7 through 12. "But as for me, I will come into thy house in the multitude of thy mercy; and in thy fear will I worship toward..." "I will worship," he says, "I'm going to worship toward thy holy temple." "Lead me, O Lord, in thy righteousness; because of my enemies make thy way straight before my face; for there is no faithfulness in their mouth. Their inward part is very wickedness; their throat is an open supplication; they flatter with their tongue. Destroy thou then, O God; let them fall by their own counsel; cast them out in the multitude of their transgressions; for they have rebelled against thee. But let all those that put their trust in thee rejoice; let them ever shout for joy; because thou defendest them; let them also, that love thy name, be joyful in thee. For thou, Lord, will bless the righteous; with favor will thou compass them as with a shield." Now David here has, we need to remember that in these verses, 7 through 12, that he prayed for himself, that God would guide him and for all of the Lord's people, that God would give them joy and keep them safe. Beloved, it's one thing that we get ourselves in a, used to praying for ourselves and used to praying in a pattern, that we will get up and remember that praying and prayer is necessary. It is necessary that we do it on a daily basis and several times a day. Thessalonians says, "Pray without ceasing." Luke says, "Pray in the morning, noon, and in the evening." The word of God tells us consecutively that we ought to pray. But we should not just pray for ourselves, we should not be selfish. We ought to pray for others, amen? And the blessing in our prayer is to learn how to pray for those who dis spitefully use us. Pray for those, beloved, where for those who talk about us. Pray for those who ridicule and point fingers and always want to try to tell us what to do and how to do it. We have to pray for them because if we do that, God will honor our prayers because he sees that we are not selfish in just praying for ourselves. We must make sure that the mercy of God would be ever our foundation of both our, of our hope and of our joy. In everything wherein we have to do with them, let us learn how to pray, amen? And when we do that, pray for ourselves and others, the grace that be with all that love Christ in sincerity, that grace, that mercy, that peace will always be with us. And so the divine blessing comes down upon us through Jesus Christ, the righteous or the just one, as of old and it did upon Israel through David. It is prevalent today in 2020. As we begin now, we're looking at Psalm 6, amen? We're looking at Psalm 6. We're going to begin reading for you this morning, the book of Psalms, 6, the 6th book. "O Lord, rebuke me not in thy anger; neither chasten me in thy hot displeasure. Have mercy upon me, O Lord; for I am weak. O Lord, heal me, for my bones are vexed." I don't know about you, but how many of us have had to ask the Lord today to have mercy upon us? Because we feel sometimes that we are weak. But remembering the word of God that says, "When I'm weak, then am I strong." We have to remember that the Lord is with us. And if he is with us, we have to have that faith that David had to know that he is with us not just sometimes, but that he is with us always. And as we are reading these verses, 1 through 7, we are going to learn that the psalmist depreciates God's wrath for the return of favor. He knows that the Lord is able to rebuke him, not in his anger, neither chases him in his hot displeasure, but he asks God, as we should be asking God constantly, "Have mercy upon us, O Lord, for we are weak. O Lord, heal us, for our bones are vexed; my soul is also sore vexed. But thou, O Lord, how long? Return, O Lord." It says, "Deliver my soul, O save me for thy mercy's sake; for in death there is no remembrance of thee; in the grave who shall give thee thanks. I am weary with my groaning all the night; make I my bed to swim; I water my couch with my tears." That's a lot of tears, amen? I'm reminded of the woman who washed Jesus' feet with the tears, so tears can fall, amen? Continuously. It says, "I water my couch with my tears." Mine eye is consumed because of grief. It waxes old because of all my enemies. This verse, or these verses, speak the language of a heart that is truly unborn. It's a heart that has been broken and contrite and has a contrite spirit under great affliction. How many of us have had broken hearts? How many of us have had contrite spirits? How many of us have had some hurt? Be it hurt in the church, hurt on our jobs, hurt in our families? We have all experienced some type of hurt. But the blessing behind all of that, beloved, is that you're still here. Those lessons have strengthened you, whether you realize it or not. It hasn't weakened you. Every experience that God gives us strengthens us. It makes us stronger. It gives us experiences so that we can now go and tell somebody else who's going through something similar to what we have experienced. We can be like Joe when he said, "Though ye slay me, yet will I trust in you." So our experiences build upon each other and they strengthen us in the Lord. Sickness brought sin to David's remembrance and he looked upon it as a token of God's displeasure against him. The affliction of the body will be tolerable and he has comfort in his soul. We must remember that every page of Scripture proclaims the fact that salvation is only of the Lord. Man, we are sinners. His case can only be reached by mercy and never is mercy more illustrious than in restoring back flyers. With good reason, we may pray that if it be the will of God and he has any further work for us or our friends to do in this world, he will yet spare us or them to serve him. So regardless as to what we're going through, regardless as to how bad the situation appears to be, that's man's version, that's man's percept of what it is. If God has work yet for us to do, we that know him, we know him as a healer, we know him as a deliverer, we know him as a restorer. We know him, that he is able to do anything but fail. So let's look now at verses 8 through 10. "Depart from me, all ye workers of iniquity; for the Lord hath heard the voice of my weeping; the Lord hath heard my supplication; the Lord will receive my prayer. Let all mine enemies be ashamed and sore vexed; let them return and be ashamed suddenly." Here now in Psalm, Psalm 6, verses 8 through 10, we are learning what a sudden change is here. We are learning that having made his request known to God, the psalmist becomes confident that his sorrow will be turned into joy. Beloved, I'm here to say to us today that if we begin to have the faith to know that whatever that situation is, that we can believe by faith that God is, that God will, and that God has worked it out, our situations will change. We have to have the faith that David has here in believing that God is going to work it out for his good. He assures himself of an answer of peace throughout these verses, 8 through 10. He's assuring himself. He's saying, "Depart from me, all ye workers of iniquity; for the Lord," he's saying, in other words, you know, "whoa, unto you." "I know that the Lord hath heard my voice; he has heard my cries." He said, "The Lord has heard my supplication; and the Lord will receive my prayer." If we can have that type of faith today, it is a blessed assurance faith. "O Lord, I might not have money to pay my bills, but Lord, I know your word says that I've never seen the righteous forsaken nor received bread. Lord, I might not have this or I might not have that, but God, I'm believing you to make a way for me. I'm believing you to open doors for me. God, I'm believing and trusting in you right now that you will do just what you said you would do." We have to remember, beloved, today, that Sunday, the message was maturing as a believer. And one of the steps in maturing was to have a prayer life, that we can pray to God. And one of the points was, don't pray as the Heathens do. But sometimes Matthew 6, 6 and 7 says, "You've got to go in that closet. You've got to shut the door and you've got to call on the Lord to hear your prayer and to answer it." Prayer is that condition. In order for us to mature in Jesus Christ, we must have a prayer life. David's prayer life was awesome. My prayer is that ours will be too. As we turn now to our last chapter of the day, this is the chapter, this is Psalm 7 that we are going to share with you today. "O Lord, my God, in thee do I put my trust; save me from them that persecute me and deliver me; lest he tear my soul like a lion, rendering it in pieces while there is none to deliver. O Lord, my God, if I have done this, if there be iniquity in my hand, if I have rewarded evil unto him that was at peace with me, yea, I have delivered him that without cause is mine enemy. Let the enemy persecute my soul and take it; yea, let him tread down my light upon the earth and lay my honor in the dust, Silah. Arise, O Lord, in thy anger; lift up thyself because of the rage of mine enemy; and awake for me to the judgment that thou hast commanded; so shall the congregation of the people compass thee about; for their sakes therefore return thou on high." And verses 8 and 9, "The Lord shall judge the people." Amen, that's a blessing right there. The Lord, not us, but the Lord shall judge the people. "Judge me, O Lord, according to my righteousness and according to my integrity that is in me; oh, let the wickedness of the wicked come to an end; but establish the just." Amen, establish the just. This is a blessing within itself, that we learn to establish the just. "For the righteous God trieth the hearts and reigns." Now, when we look at these verses here today, we learn that David flees to God for succour. And when we use the word succour, S-U-C-C-O-U-R, that simply means that David went to him because the times were bad, the times were hard. So David goes to God for like refuge. But Christ alone could call on heaven to attest his righteousness in all things. All his works were wrought in righteousness, amen? All of his works were wrought in righteousness. And the prince of this world found nothing whereon, whereof, to justify, to accuse him, amen? The plea is, "For the righteous God trieth the hearts and the reins." He knoweth the secret wickedness of the wicked and how to bring it to an end. He is the witness to the secret sincerity of the just and his ways of establishing it. When a man makes peace with God, beloved, about all of his sins, you believe me today when I say that upon the terms of God's grace and God's mercy, through the sacrifice of the mediator, he can, his comparison to his enemies, God's justice will decide in his favor. So God, he is that mediator. When we go before Lord asking forgiveness of our sin, the word of God says, "He is faithful and just to forgive us." Verse 10 says, "My defense is of God, which saveth the upright in heart." God judges the righteous and God is angry with the wicked every day. "If he turn not, he will wet his sword; he hath bent his bow and made it ready; he hath also prepared for him the instruments of death; he ordained his arrows against the persecutors. Behold, he trebail it with iniquity and hath conceived mischief and brought forth falsehood. He made a pit and digged it; and it's fallen into the ditch which is made; his mischief shall return upon his own head and his violent dealing shall come down upon his own face." Verse 17 says, "I will praise the Lord according to his righteousness and will sing praise to the name of the Lord most high." You see, David is confident that he shall find God his powerful Savior. The destruction of sinners may be prevented by their conversion for it is threatened if he not, if he shall not turn for... If he not, if he shall not turn from the evil, then let him expect to be for the ruin. In other words, God gives us another opportunity to accept him in the pardon of our sin. He gives us, he warns us of the danger that if we don't accept him as our Lord, as our Lord and Savior, that there will be, there will be danger in the end. So we must learn to repent in order to prevent the danger. He is slow to punish, but God is long-suffering toward us, and not willing that any should perish. That's why he is faithful, and he says, I will forgive you seventy times seven. He gives us numerous times to repent and do better in our living. So we look at this, and the sinner is described in verses fourteen to sixteen. He says, he surveilth with iniquity, and hath conceived mischief, and bought forth falsehood. He made a pit, amen? He dug it, and it's fallen into the ditch which he made. His mischief shall return upon his own head, and his violent dealing shall come down upon his own pace. But then he says to us, hallelujah, in verse seventeen, he gives us and lets us know that there is some relief, that I will praise, verse seventeen says, the Lord according to his righteousness, and will sing praise to the name of the Lord Most High. This is true in a sense for all sinners. We are looking and we are trying to get repentance. We should, because the word says, for all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. So we must make sure that as we look to our Savior in our trials, our tribulations, that we are asking God to forgive us of any sins, of omission, sins of commission. Because what we are doing, we are making sure that we are in a right state with God. So we need to make sure that we have asked forgiveness. I ask forgiveness when I wake up in the morning. I ask forgiveness before I go to bed at night, that if I have offended anyone, not knowingly, not hurtfully, but sometimes people receive things differently. So we ask God's forgiveness, amen? Because we never know who is offended by what. So we are looking to say that we will praise the Lord according to his righteousness, and we will sing praise to the name of the Lord Most High. As we continue in this word, next week, our assignment will be to read Psalms eight, nine, and ten. Psalms eight, you are going to find to be so rewarding. This is a very, very familiar song that we have heard people say so often. And it starts out, oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth, amen? So I want you to take back today this word and apply it to your lives. Let's ask forgiveness of our sins, whether we have intentionally or unintentionally hurt someone. Let us pray more, pray not just for ourselves, but pray for others. And let us continue to seek God while he might yet be found, knowing and having the faith that David has had of saying that, I know, I know that, have mercy on me, Lord, because I know, he believes that the Lord will heal him. He believes that the Lord will hear his prayer. He believes that the Lord has seen his tears. Let us have the blessed assurance today of knowing that our God will answer our prayer. May God bless you, and may his peace be upon you. We'll see you Sunday at eleven a.m. for a sermon on Sunday coming. May God bless you.